Mr. McNulty.
I'm here.
Ms. Tribellis.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Pierce. Mr. Avada Nula.
Well, we have elections today since this is the first meeting of the year. Do we have any nominations for chairman?
I nominate Chris Dean Tribellis for that. No, it's a...
Motion to nominate Mr. McNulty as chairman of the Orange Township Zoning Commission for 2023. Motion made by Ms. Tribellis, seconded by Ms. Harris. All those voting. Mr. McNulty.
Yes.
Ms. Tribellis.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ironman, do you have what we're doing tonight? Just to read that off and send all that out. I can see lots of folks here, and that's great. You will get your opportunity to speak as well.
Sure. So just a brief overview of kind of the procedure for this evening. So this is an overlay application. It is not a full-blown rezoning. So as a reminder, both to the commission members, to myself, and to the public, the zoning commission will not be voting on this application this evening. This matter is set for a public hearing with the Board of Orange Township Trustees on March 15 at 5:30 p.m. So as distinguished from a regular rezoning, this is more of a work session for the commission members to be able to give some feedback to the applicant and to try to maybe work out some kinks on the project, just to get their feedback and make sure everybody is on the same page. Again, the actual public hearing for this application will be with the Board of Orange Township Trustees, March 15 at 5:30 p.m. I do have a staff report if you would like me to go over it briefly.
Sure, go ahead. We'll have Tony tell us.
All right. So this is an application not for rezoning, but the parcels in question are currently zoned FR1, but they are within the Route 23 corridor overlay district. The applicant is requesting that the overlay district be applied to these two parcels located at 79 Parkway Drive and the parcel immediately to the south. The two parcels total 5.806 acres that are just south of Parkway Drive and west of US23. Currently, the applicant is proposing to construct three buildings with undetermined users for occupancy. As a reminder, this is not a planned district, so the development plan is not set in stone by any means. The site plan is provisional at this point. The setbacks will control rather than a specific development plan. In terms of surrounding area, to the north is farm residential, and also another parcel that has had the overlay district applied to it at Caliber Collision. To the south is farm residential. To the east is both farm residential and planned commercial, and to the west is also farm residential and residences. On the next page of the staff report, you can see the aerial view from the county auditor's website, and below that is the proposed development plan for the site in question. In terms of development standards for setbacks, we're looking at a 50-foot building setback from US23, a 30-foot setback along Parkway Drive, South Parkway Drive, a 15-foot building setback along the eastern border of the property, which is a divergence that is requested by the applicant, 100-foot building setback along the west border of the property, a budding residential. The plans show a 25-foot building setback south of the proposed retention pond. We would note that this setback should be 100 feet. It is noted as 100 feet in the development text, but on the plans, it is shown as 25 feet along the south border of the property. Again, the applicant has one divergence request regarding the setback from the FR1 lot along US23. And Brett, do you mind scrolling back up to the site plan real quick? So just to clarify, the divergence that is requested is that parcel where the cursor is now, which is currently zoned FR1. Staff is supportive of the divergence for this setback going from 15 feet from 100. Even though it is zone residential, there are no residences on the site. Nobody is living there now, and the property is owned by a commercial entity. Therefore, staff does support that divergence request of 15 feet. But as I mentioned earlier, to the south, we will enforce the 100-foot setback from that southern property line, as that property to the south does have a residential building on it. In terms of architectural elements, no details are provided, but the applicant notes that all buildings constructed would comply with the architectural standards laid out in the 23 overlay district. The same for landscaping. Again, no landscaping plans have been provided, but the development would comply with all the standards laid out in the RCOD. And a retention basin is proposed, shown on the plans on the western portion of the site, which does provide some additional buffering from the FR1 lots to the west. Sinage, again, no details are provided, but all signage would comply with RCOD signage standards. In terms of access and walkability, multi-use path is proposed to be placed on Parkway Drive and Route 23 with a crossing near the Parkway-US23 intersection to connect to the north. The trail width along US23 is proposed at 10 feet, and as the path curves around to Parkway Drive, it is shown as at a width of 5 feet. Right now, two vehicular access points are proposed along Parkway Drive to the north. And in discussion with the Delaware County Engineers' Office, the applicant is recommended to have discussions about possible access easements with neighboring property owners, particularly to the south and to the east of the site for future connectivity to those parcels. We mentioned the divergence. The fire department did not really have any comments at this time, since the site layout is not finalized. Once the site layout is finalized and the permits come in for buildings, they would review the site and buildings at that point. The Orange Township Operations Department did have some comments, which I will relay now, and the applicant can discuss these during his presentation. These are some of the more technical aspects of this development. So there were some concerns over the sanitary connection through Caliber Collision that possibly an easement would be required across Parkway Drive with the Delaware County Engineers' Office. There was another comment that the 5-foot path along the north and west parts of the site should match the width of the path to the north on Caliber Collisions property, which I believe is 10 feet, but I will have to confirm that. There's also some questions about drainage and where the retention pond outlets. We recommend that the applicant work with the Delaware County Engineers' Office on that issue. It's not necessarily a zoning issue, but it is part of the overall development process. And then there are also just some questions that the applicant should also work out with the engineers' office regarding traffic and roadway improvements that we may want to look at. Easements along Parkway Drive for future road expansion, as well as possible intersection improvements. Street widening, ride-in, ride-out should all be considered in consultation with the Delaware County Engineers' Office. That is all that I have at this time. I believe the applicant is here. If the commission has any questions, at your pleasure.
Ironman, do you have anything you'd like to present?
And can the record note that we have two additional zoning commission members have joined, so we now have two commission staff?
No.
Apologies for the delay.
Should the record show that they showed up after the election of the officers?
All part of careful planning.
Just having fun. Good evening. My name is Tony Ironman. Let me try this again. I go lower. I can keep my voice, I think. Good evening. My name is Tony Ironman. I'm working with Minaj Pokala, who's the owner and CEO of Pan Group. Naj is here this evening. I apologize for my voice. Allergies seem to be acting up, and I haven't been taking my Claritin, so shame on me. This morning, I prepared a two-page presentation, and Robin prepared three pages and took almost all of my presentation, but there are some things I'd like to get into a little bit of detail on, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we can move forward. The site is 5.8 acres, 5.806 acres actually, on the southwest corner of US23 and Parkway Drive. The address is 79 Parkway. That's where the title of the binder comes from. The site is fully within the RCOD or the US23 overlay district, corridor overlay district. It's in the RCOD. It allows for your choice of three different subareas, and the subarea we selected was the commercial office subarea, which has its own set of standards, and we agreed with the permitted uses. We're not asking for any change of divergence on the permitted uses. Likewise, the architectural standards, the site landscaping standards, the signage and lighting standards, access connectivity, everything is outlined in RCOD under the subarea. We're agreeing in full compliance with everything. The only site, and the other thing is, I just skipped it, is the site coverage, 80% max. There's a 20% non-coverage, which is 1.16 acres, and we agree with that as well. Our preliminary engineering shows that we're probably going to need about 3/4 of an acre of stormwater, but that's going to be defined as the uses are defined, because the parking lot's subjective to the type of use. But generally speaking, our intent is to show the basin to the west, provide a buffer between the permitted uses in the RCOD and the residential areas to the west. We're respecting their privacy and we're respecting the impact of 23 as well as any potential use on this site. And if we can provide them a little buffer, a little green space, or area to walk with, the trails that are going around the site, we are pleased to do that. So we're doing that. As Robin pointed out, there is one request for divergence. The site that the truck parts retail store is on is located on our east boundary between us and 23, on the southern portion of our site. It's just off at the bottom of the page right there. Yeah, that's the truck parts area, the retail center there. The same owner owns the piece to the north. It's solid grounds, I think it is. It is a vacant lot right now. Common sense and logic tells us that with a retail use there, the vacant lot to the north, and sewer coming, because we will extend sewer there, that use will soon, sometime in the future, be a commercial retail type of use. Has its curb cut already with this truck parts facility. We will, as part of the connectivity standards, we will extend the drive down that as well. So they'll have access in and out, as well as sewer water. Water is all over the place. We've dealt with up and down 23. Logically, it's going to be a commercial use. While the piece to the west is a single-family residential in the RCOD, we're not willing to assume for a moment that they're going to convert to commercial, so we are not requesting any change to any divergence at all on the setbacks there. In fact, we're proposing, if you look at the sight line diagram, we're proposing landscaping and bounding in that area too, just to help buffer their houses, their residential area as well. All the utilities are either to the site, or we have access proposed to the site. In Section 3, it's probably the first time, I think, I've ever done it, but we included the easement to access through Caliber Collision to our site. We thought it was important to prove that we do have access to the sewer on the north side of Caliber Collision. I don't think I've ever shown the easement to sanitary lines on the infrastructure section before, but we did. The water is down Parkway. The water's also along 23. We're responsible for upsizing the line that's on the north side of 23, bringing it underneath Parkway to our site. Stormwater is located in the west. Our engineers looked at outlets. I don't have the engineer here this evening, but he's comfortable that we do have access to an outlet for stormwater. I'm not saying it's immediately to the west. We do have the ability to pipe it to the south, which I think is where the outlet is. The plan itself is an idea, and the purpose, the reason we're coming with this, making the application to the township, is my client would like to develop the site. He can't market it without having uses defined on the site, so this makes no sense. Our interpretation, the manufacturing, and the other subarea were far more impactful on the site. I think the third one was the mixed use, which had residential and retail. Residential's going to drive traffic as well, so permitted uses are really defined in this section, and we agree with those, and we're willing to be limited to those and market the site accordingly. That's really all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or respond to any comments. I'm sorry for my voice. You guys ought to enjoy this, because usually I'm loud.
What does your client hope that the use will be, given that there is no defined one yet? Any thought on what we might do before, or at least market it to be used for?
The only thing we can do at this point, and it's probably the easiest thing to point to, is look up and down 23 and see that it seems like the uses along the front, or along the, right up against the right-of-way tend to be more, I hate to say fast food, but fast food, or banks, or convenience-type of retail uses. That's probably the best way to describe it. The areas in the second tier, if you will, or the tiers behind the front, tend to be offices, or, you know, I think daycares are permitted use in this area. I'm trying to think what else might be in there, but office kind of uses, the things that aren't quite so related to 23 and the convenience use of the corridor, so.
And Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, the architectural design, once they decide whatever the building is going to look like, that comes back to you all to...
Correct, yeah. So any zoning permit for any building would have to, those buildings would have to comply with the standards laid out in the RCOD.
This is already bound by the 23 overlay, and Mr. Ironman's already said he was ready to provide with all of that, and Robin, the zoning will take a look at that, and so, yeah, those won't be any issues.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. Good housing or...
It's not a permitted use in there now.
So it's just planned commercial? Commercial development?
In the commercial retail subarea.
Exactly.
Any other questions on the...
It's not a permitted use. That would be the mixed use area in the subareas. We're not going that way.
But it could be like an office building with usable office space or something like that. So I have a couple comments. One is about the divergence request, so thank you for clarifying, because I also caught that the 25 is shown on that site plan.
That is a cat error, and I apologize for that. We'll correct that before we get to the trustees.
Because it looks like right now the building's setback may be 75 feet from the southern property line, just based on the way it's scaled. So if that can be corrected before it goes to the trustees, I would appreciate it. I am a little nervous about going from 100 feet to 15 feet. I understand the logic behind it, the fact that the property in question is owned by the neighboring commercial entity, and they could easily expand into it. But I also know from past experience that we don't know what the future holds, as all of us know from the pandemic. So that's why I'm a little nervous or uncomfortable about going from 100 to 15 feet. If it could be some other middle ground, maybe I would feel a little more comfortable.
The reason I pointed out the truck retail site to the south is it is 15 feet there along that portion, that portion in the south, that juts into 100, and then it goes up and it comes back out.
But I believe that's because the truck parts is zoned.
Yeah, it's planned commercial, yeah.
Exactly. Or else it wouldn't be there.
And if it were to please the commission, we could go to something like 25 feet or something like that. As the plan shows, it's parking on both sides of those office-type of uses. And the reason for that is, is because there's 100-foot setback to the west along the Boza family's lot there. So it pushes everything forward, so pushes it towards 23, rightfully so. And if we had enough room to work, if some other user came in, you know, we could make 25 feet work, I think, because that would allow for a drive along that property and still maintain adequate...
Preparation.
And space for a structure in there too.
So, and then the, another thing I had was, and Robin, if you can chime in on this, I thought, one of the purposes, at least in my mind, of the 23 overlay is to encourage development, but also to encourage, I want to say, development that activates 23, not necessarily like the Walmart with the big sea of parking up front, or the Meyers and all those examples. And so, one thing I noticed from your site plan is that none of the buildings really face the streets, per se. They're all sort of perpendicular to them. Is there a way to sort of shift that around so that, you know, we've had the issue before with the 23 overlay of having to have like a commercial face along the street and not a side view or rear-end view or the view of the dumpster?
Yeah.
Just to make it a little more attractive. And same thing along, you know, Parkway Drive. Nobody wants to see the side or the rear end of the building, especially if people are driving to their house. So I would suggest, think about that for the next stage of, I hate to use the term activate, because architects book uses it so much, but something that...
You know, the term in the zoning circles, and you guys are probably the authors of it, is four-sided architecture.
Yeah.
So what we could do is say there's two-sided architecture with two fronts, like a corner lot in Evans Farm.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we could say something like that, where the building that says site two on it is one to point to.
Or, you know, the one along 23 could have two-sided architecture.
Yeah, and that's always been the plan.
Where you could have, you know, and you could still fit in a drive and a row of parking within like 40 feet, and still have the building have a presence along the street and not just to see it.
Yeah.
Something that would make the area look a little...
That was the intent, but we didn't really say it. I'm glad you did.
Okay, I'm sorry. So that was probably my, between the southern 100-foot setback, which I do want on the south, like I said, I have some concerns about the 15, because we're not there yet, so if we could find a happy ground in the middle. But the one thing I do appreciate is your very nice retention pond landscaping plan. And I almost want to suggest, if you do go down this route, maybe put in some benches or something, so that the neighborhood or people in the office buildings can take a walk around your pond and maybe have their lunch on a park bench or something like that. You can talk to Robin about that. Might even get like bonus points or something for development when we do that.
You do for residential density, but I don't believe there's any...
You don't believe it's for commercial?
No.
Well, that's a change.
Noted.
No kidding.
And then the other thing I had about the retention pond is, and I'll be honest, in my neighborhood, our retention pond is really like a cesspool. It's pretty murky, so I would suggest, put a fountain in it, aerate it, do something to make sure that it's an attractive pond for the community, and that's mostly because there's residences nearby. And I think it would help to sort of, at least, like I said, part of the purpose of the, for me, the 23 overlay is to find like a happy medium of how to develop 23 and make it look nice and make people want to be happy there. And if you could go and, like I said, make the retention pond nice. And I think that's about it as far as use. I'm perfectly happy with planned commercial. Yeah, yeah. Got no issues with that, just, like I said, some of the tweaking of the placement and tweaking of the retention pond. I think I've said enough.
I will have a seat, then I'm sure there's someone behind me that wants to say something.
Mr. Ironman, we will just open this up to public comments. We would ask that you limit, give your name and address when you come up to speak. We ask that you limit this to three minutes, and we also please ask that if your comments have already been said and don't come up, please don't come up and repeat it if it's already been stated, because this is still for the record, so whatever you have to say will be recorded. Anybody who wants to be first, name, address, and your comments.
I forget already what you told me to tell you. My name is Doyle Hartman. I live at 150 South Parkway Drive. Is that all you need?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, first off, I'd like to say thanks a lot to you guys for your service to our community. I appreciate it. I know it's not a very thankful job sometimes, but I appreciate you doing it. I have several things I wanted to go over, if I could. First off, I just want to remind you, I know we're within this Route 23 corridor overlay district and all that, but it is right now within our subdivision. This is a 70-year-old subdivision. It was platted in 1950, and these are two lots within that subdivision. So our overall concern is that this has been a subdivision for 70 years. We know it's going to be into the corridor, but we really want to preserve the integrity of our subdivision and not lose that small town feel that we have back in there. Narrow roads, only about 15, 16 feet pavement, and no sidewalks, so people walk their dogs, they take their children, children ride their bicycles. So traffic and all that is going to be a major issue for us. So, like I say, I know we're in the corridor, but bear in mind, this has been a subdivision lot for 70 years plus, and I hate to lose that feel back in there. Another thing that, I know we've been talking about this detention pond out front there, or out to the west. Let me clarify. I am a civil engineer. I've done a lot of drainage. Let me, let me clarify. I am a civil engineer. I've done a lot of drainage studies over the year, done a lot of stormwater studies. So basically, right now, only about 30 to 40% of this lot drains to the west. The rest drains to the east to Route 23. So we already have drainage issues coming down that ditch, coming along South Parkway. And then also on the properties to the rear, that of South Parkway Drive, where it goes back between there and Orange Road. So it's, there's a lot of bad drainage to this whole neighborhood. So my concern, and I think Delaware County's concern will also be, do not introduce any more water into our subdivision. There's going to have to be water going back to the east, or like I think the gentleman mentioned, it may go to the south. As long as it goes to the south and goes to the same drainage swale that right now comes through that property immediately south, pickups plus, and then goes across Orange Road and heads down to the Old Tangent River from that point. It has to be directed to that. Otherwise, it's going to come back into our subdivision and cause more drainage issues that we, we've already had problems with. Traffic is obviously a major concern for us. We've already had trouble getting out on Parkway, from Parkway onto 23. And 150 more parking spaces, some kind of a fast food restaurant. Obviously, you're going to introduce a whole lot more traffic into that, that area. It's going to be a nightmare for us as residents trying to get in and out. And so that's, that's a major issue that we're going to be concerned about. The, another thing that I personally would really like to see, I mean, I appreciate your idea about putting a pond over there and making it an amenity, but still it's going to be a great visual impact for us to look out of our driveway and see potentially a 50 foot high building sitting where, where we've only got a one story ranch building sitting here right now. And I would like to go on record, and I'll be talking with the trustees more about this, but when, I don't know how long you guys have been in the neighborhood, but when Meyer went in and when Home Depot went in, up against an existing subdivision, they end up putting in about a 12 foot average height, about 12 foot high earthen embankment that provides a wonderful barrier between that subdivision and that commercial development. I would personally love to see something like that go along the perimeter of all the properties on the west side and even into the north side. Something that will provide a visual barrier, a sound barrier, reduce the headlight glare coming onto our, our neighborhood. And also then just preserve kind of like that feel that we've had for 70 years of a subdivision that's rural, one acre lots, two acre lots. It would just provide a wonderful barrier. I know my time's up. So appreciate your time, guys.
I was actually going to, if I may, make a comment.
Are you got a question for me?
No, actually, it's more of a statement because I too was worried about traffic in and out of Park Drive, Parkway Drive. But really, because we don't know the use yet, we don't know how much parking there will be. We can't do a traffic study because we don't have a tenant yet. So it's, it's, we understand your concern. And, you know, Robin can work with everybody, but that's something that like US 23 between ODOT and the Delaware County Engineers Office, they'll have to figure out the traffic, the, whether it's right in, right out only, or all that stuff. Would have to come in a future phase once we know what's going there.
Right. So we want to get it on record. And just so you guys know too, we are already in communication with Delaware County about putting a barrier right there on the west side of where Caliber Collision comes out, where we would put a gated entrance in, where it would only residents and emergency vehicles would have access through that gate. Then we would still have access through West Orange coming through, but it would cut off a lot of that traffic coming through. When people can't get out on the 23 from Parkway Drive, they're going to want to come around South Parkway to West Orange, out to Orange, out to the light.
Through their neighborhood. Through your neighborhood.
Right, exactly. Where our kids are riding their bicycles and.
And yeah, like I said, I understand your concern that had occurred to me, but.
Yes.
Until we know.
There aren't enough details to this to even know what happens. We get no traffic studies. We don't know what it is. We don't know what the traffic's going to be. The building layout may be different depending on who their tenants may be. The pond can move. This is, this is so preliminary. When Mr. Ironman is offering.
I appreciate that. We can at least give you the input at this point, right?
And that's what we needed. Thank you very much.
Right, yeah.
And that's also what the trustees can use as well.
Sure, we'll be talking with them.
And the notes were being taken as you were mentioning in our question.
I, I, I've been to these kind of meetings from the other side as a civil engineer working with developers. And I, I don't want to be the NIMBY crowd, but we do want to protect the integrity of this 70 year old subdivision. And that's what I want to come through loud and clear. This is our subdivision. You're talking about making it look good from 23 perspective, and we want, we want foresighted architecture. Because we have to look at it from the back. We're not worried about what it looks like on 23. We're worried about what it looks like on South Parkway. Yeah. So, I mean, very good. Thanks for your time, guys.
Anyone else? Name, address, and any new comments this gentleman hasn't made? I don't know if it's new, but.
Hi, Johnson Marrero, 7294 Latimer Lane, here with Boy Scouts taking notes about this meeting to meet one of the communication requirements. So appreciate you letting us be here throughout this. I just had a quick question because we're always driving up this way. How are people going to get out and head northbound on 23 from Parkway with this in place? Because the hardest part to all of this development through this whole area is something new pops up in just like the sheets on, on Polaris Parkway. Now people can fly out of that gas station right onto, onto Polaris Parkway where everyone's merging right to turn right onto Old State. So with this popping up, how are people going to come out of that and head northbound? That's my only question.
Up to Delaware County Engineering and they typically do a pretty good job. Polaris Parkway, of course, is Columbus. So Columbus takes care of that. This will be Delaware County Engineering. And once they know what's there, what those roadways, the traffic studies, then they will take, take it over with. And maybe make some changes. And so, yeah, you could be in contact with them if you choose. That's who's, that's who's going to be taking care of it.
Yeah, because just as a, just a general citizen driving in that area, it's already painful. So I can imagine that people getting in and out of there that.
Well, there's 30,000 people that live in this township. So there's lots of them that live here. So yes, roads at times are crowded. We are highly populated. That can't be, can't be overlooked or not taken, at least looking at.
Jackson, did you learn something tonight? All right, thank you.
Great job. You brought up a very good question and it's something we've been working with county engineer on as far as access to 23. When Caliber Collision came in, when the cross development came in, they were provide, they were required to provide an easement or a drive easement from, the name of the street escapes me, but it's the street that runs along the west side of the Naish My Children's.
Pacer Drive.
Pacer Drive. So they're extending that down, or there's an easement to extend it down to Parkway. We are to continue that easement through the parking lot. It's a drive, it's a private drive easement, but it's still an easement for access and that will extend all the way to Orange Road eventually. The county engineer has been working to secure those easements as well as dealing with all the other things that he's able to in regards to the 23 access. I, I've been doing this for a long time, back when I had a voice. And I seriously doubt if the ODOT and the county engineer will ever allow a traffic light at Parkway. I just, they just won't. And they, so they have other access means. And I think the drive, the easement north, south that will go from Pacer down to Orange will be one way. That'll probably be ultimately the most convenient. So we don't, so the visitors and the employees on the site don't have to go back through Parkway and cut through the subdivision. I just wanted to share with you what we've been working with them on.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, any thoughts or comments on that idea of building that barrier story, I think we talked about it earlier. That's the challenge. Since we have no comments about it, we'll take it on consideration and move on, but I don't know if you had any thoughts.
I, I'll give you my personal feeling. I'm not a big fan of concrete barriers. I think, I find them very institutional, like along I-71 or 270. I would much prefer, I would much. I'd much prefer to do mounding.
Yeah, and I think that's.
On the, the sightline diagram, we came in and showed mounding in plan view at the cross section. It's such a large scale that you can't really see anything. But the intention was is to provide a mound on the, on the west side of the, I'm sorry, on the east side of the trail along there. At three to one slope, it's, which is a maintainable slope, will get as high as we can. If, if, if it's necessary, we can go two to one, but you can't mow a two to one slope without turning a lawnmower over on someone, which causes danger, hazard. But the distance is about 400 to 450 feet from, from the street to the, where that building is shown. So it's a football field in that, well over a football field in distance too. So the intent was is to put plantings in there with the mounding, if we can get higher mounds, absolutely. We'd be happy to do that.
Point two six, then I sort of, I prefer mounding trees to a concrete wall. While it might be good for the neighborhood, I'm not sure the concrete wall that's by Meyers or by the Home Depot.
Don't you actually know? That's actually for the Home Depot and stuff. I live in that neighborhood. I remember the big deal that was when that was built.
Like I said, I don't think a concrete wall will.
I want to start that.
Okay. So, but I think mounding trees.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you know. Well, except though.
A lot will bring into the ditch or the ground to. What we'll do is sort of drain here. Bring the water back into. We know that there's some drainage issues and so. It's on this property, so there'll be a business association.
Another couple of minutes.
I just want to reiterate something about drainage. I don't know how familiar you guys are regarding drainage, but real quickly, there are two things that come into play. One is the rate at which the water comes off. And one, the other is the amount of water that comes off. Okay? We are concerned about both on our property back in that subdivision. So when you go from grassy meadow to concrete and asphalt, the amount of water that comes off of that site is going to be much larger. The rate, they can, they can meter that out through the detention basin. They cannot control the amount. That is controlled by the asphalt and concrete. So, and I'll be talking to the county about this. They know that very well also, but just the idea that bringing more water into that pond and then trying to meter it out, it will just continue to put water, 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 water down through our subdivision for a long time after a storm because it's been metered out at a slow rate. But there's a whole lot more water coming off and getting stored into that pond temporarily. So mount and rate are two very critical things when it comes to stormwater, so.
Anyone else?
Hi, Beth Boza, 159 South Parkway Drive. So I understand that there's always going to be growing pains between residential and business areas. Anytime you have more of a growth of commercial properties, especially when you have overlays and system, or I'm sorry, in place. I think it's really important in Orange Township to maintain an integrity of both the residential aesthetics as well as the commercial aesthetics. Because right now, Orange Township is a very desirable place to live and to have businesses. If you go too far in one direction or the other, you may start to lose property values on one side or another. Whereas currently, right now, you have a very nice balancing act where this is a very desirable place to be. So in kind of reference to some of that, some things that I have questions about are with the mounding and the trees. And I know this sounds like a small question at first, however, dealing with the maturity and age of trees that will be planted. Currently, the space that is there harbors many very mature grown cottonwood, oak. I believe there's an oak tree on that property that's well over 150 years old. And as we take those things down, will they be replaced with 10 year old maple trees or what kind of planting? So I know that's really far in the future when thinking about the usage of the buildings and things like that, but still something environmentally that we need to consider. As well as what will be done with the mounding as far as light pollution into the development and sound pollution. There's already a lot of sound coming in from Route 23, which I know is part of living near a big highway. However, when you have ways that you can help maintain or manage that, that's also good for the business buildings that are there, especially if you're thinking more of like office usage or doctors and things like that. No one wants to hear giant semi trucks like while they're getting their teeth cleaned or something to that nature. Also in this, wondering about dumpster locations and screening as well. And then also again, concerns about some traffic turning in, especially after the, and again, I know this is very early, but getting on record, especially after the disastrous accident of a few weeks ago, or just a couple of weeks ago. So just some different concerns and questions that I have, especially obviously pertaining to the western and southwestern borders of the proposed property lines. Thank you.
Any other comments on the board?
Number web, 137, fourth way. I was wondering if there was going to be any type of fencing at all going around commercial property to separate any of the residential properties.
Fencing, there is currently or post fencing around the majority of the site, including, that's what I'm wondering.
I sense this is still very open ended. That other questions and discussions, was there just decided what is going to be? You can always be able to work with Mr. Ironman here. He's on, he'd be happy, even to meet with you, I'm sure. All right. No other questions and your comments?
Where can you find this information online? The thing that you scrolled through earlier?
Yep. So all of, all of the zoning applications are accessible. We have a Google Drive that's linked from our township website. So orangetwp.org. If you go to the, there's a few steps, but zoning department, then current zoning applications. Then this is housed within that. And if anybody, if that's too complicated for anybody, feel free to give me a call, shoot me an email, stop by the office. I can print you off a hard copy or send you. over direct.
And this, this was called seventy-nine Parkway.
And also on the website, I believe, is the US twenty-three overlay guidelines, that if the overlay is used and approved, that is the guidelines that this developer will have to follow. So that is also on the website, so you can see how it needs to be developed for the US twenty-three overlay.
All right, no further comments on the, on the board? This may use a jury.